Thanks everyone. As you can probably tell, Andy is absent, I'm pretty sure it's up for the paper chair, but hopefully it goes smoothly, but if I forget anything, hopefully you'll understand why. I think the first item is a declaration of any disclosable community interests. Item 16224, apologies for absence.
The juice have been received from councillors and Blackborne, Richard Ross Smith, Maddie Swirro, David Jeremy in Colorado.
Item 16324, to confirm the minutes of the former heritage meeting. Previous. I'm reading on minutes to 12 for June 2024, which was received by full council on 25th June. To be confirmed as a true record, signed and insured by the Chair. And I believe I know you said halfway through, so I'm hoping other people have read the minutes and confirmed that everything happened after I left was all accurate. What happened with the minutes? So. Onto item 16424, Mayor's events to review and discuss delivered events and provide an update on those upcoming in the mail or slash the calendar. Hopefully everyone's received the presentation pack and been through it, so I think I guess just right, is there anyone, any questions? Is there anything you wanted to note about? Does anyone have any questions or things to note about those? I'm just checking, basically it's not changed from last month, as far as I could tell.
I mean, that's the full calendar there, and as you can see, we're within budget, and so that's fine. In fact, we've got an underspend of budget, so that's fine. I do not have to turn this off, honestly sorry.
Okay, so I think that's, we just need to note that, I don't think there's anything to decide on that. Item 16524, town events to receive and view an update on delivered and planned events. Obviously again, it has been a sort of full update. I presume people have managed to read it, if anyone managed to go through it and got any questions? No, I'm very happy to, I've got something I just wanted to correct. I was slightly confused by the allocation of budgets for the Woodson Fund conference tomorrow weekend. We've got an allocated budget of £1,200, that's expenses incurred at £1,000, that was low. Confused about that, because I'm missing something very obvious there, so. Which one are we looking at? The Woodson. Okay. Sorry, let's get prepared to schedule.
Yeah, so the allocated budget was £1,200, but we. You know, we incurred expenses of about £1,000 for the Woodson one, so we were under spend there.
Yeah, that's a, that's just an underspend.
That's just an underspend, yeah, so we, you know, we brought the Woodson event in on, you know, under budget, so that was, that was fine. I think we spoke about this at the last meeting, this one, so the ones that have occurred since the last meeting are the two Friday Lives, which are underneath. Again, we brought those in on budget. However, the two events were hampered with bad weather, so they weren't particularly well attended. We've got one more to go in the programme of the Friday Lives, which is the 2nd of August. Kids will be on holiday, we've got a bigger splash, we've got more family activities, so some of the activities that we saw in the, in the Woodson weekend, we're bringing that back to the marketplace, so hopefully, where they're all permitting, there'll be more of an attendance there, and there'll be plenty for the kids and families to do, so hopefully that one will be good. But again, we've brought both of those so far in on budget. That is the weekend when the Brenton are doing that as well, isn't it? So it should be for all people kicking around. So it's a really busy week, we've got the Midsummer Makeover in the Carnegie all week long. On the Friday night, we've got the Friday Live on the marketplace, and then Saturday and Sunday, we've got the stuff on the riverside, so it's quite a full week, and plenty of things for the families today to get involved with, so that's really good.
I was going to note, that was aware that it's a few different activities, are we putting out it? Education about all of the events together, because I think it's quite important, we basically make, I know some department event, some is a town event, but I think we need to make sure that we're posting on our socials about all of them, so they see.
Lots of things that, yeah, so I think the event of the weekend, there's lots of elements to that. The key part of it is the screen on the green type event, but there's lots of things that we're advertising that's happening in the library, in the Ancient House Museum, et cetera, et cetera. And we will do exactly, exactly that, Doug, we will make sure that Hazel promotes what's happening the whole week, so if you can't make one day, you know that there's something going on another, so we'll definitely do that. The other thing is we'll take it on board, is the comment, I think it came from you at the last meeting, is some of those family activities that we delivered, make sure that there's something for every age group, because, you know, from the tiny tots through to the sort of early teens, we've expressed that to the provider of those games.
So it's the same Friday Woodson Weekend, but they can be just in slow.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else have anything that they want to talk about?
I had one, it's probably a point I've completely missed here, I couldn't understand how we generated money. So where we got £70 generated.
Only because we charge for the food vendors and there's another store toy den, comes along and cheat, so they pay for the fit.
So when we have the big, like Woodson weekends, we don't charge?
Well, when, when we have the big Woodson weekend, the stuff down the middle of the town, we don't, but if we had some other activities on the market square, we potentially could do.
Yeah, one other question I had on the, because we use the same company for the, our events.
Yeah, yeah.
There's always a tendency that we're going to end up at the same stalls every time, it becomes a bit something. I imagine they'd be really protective about having other stalls turn up and be involved in that, so that it grows a bit, is that possible or not?
We had a bit of a to-do with a couple of stall holders at the summer event last year, when we brought some stalls onto the market, so our and I took care of what was going on down King Street. We wanted to populate the market square, and we did bring some more foodie type traders. It was only for, it wasn't for the full four days, it was only for two days of the four, but a couple of traders actually were really miffed with about that. And I said, look, come on, there's 2,000 plus people coming down here, there's enough for everybody. But again, it's not, so we're being away from that with the, with the events that's upcoming in the summer and Christmas. But then in those, we've got plenty of other activities going on that we can fill the market square. We will, in the H and E meeting in September, we will start the process as a committee to decide what we do next year. Yeah, so maybe that's a conversation Mac to bring up in September, maybe we don't have as many continental markets as the three that we do, maybe we just pick Woodson and Christmas. And then, actually, let's do something ourselves, maybe, to try and keep the momentum, but that's a conversation that we can have when we plan in September. Because as part of this process, you'll be, you'll be planning what, what are town events for next year.
No, that makes sense, thank you.
So just to confirm, essentially, there's no other stalls for when we have our events coming in?
Not, not, no, no. No, but we will have other stalls and other activities here.
Anything else, I shall move on to partnership events, again, I think it's just a, to know this, if everyone's happy to note that report. Right, so 16624, partnership events.
So partnership events, we, I think we might, we may well have this far as perhaps we get. Yeah, so can, can we just backtrack to, to this one? Because as part of the decision-making process that we spoke about and implemented at the last H and E, the Christmas event is one of the town events, a part of our programme, so we agreed that we could do Woodson, Summer Heritage in September, and Christmas Lights in the weekend. A lot of that was planned and sort of almost, we'd, we'd done that. But because the new process came in, we were about to start putting a little bit of meat on the bones in terms of Christmas. So that's why you have this on the, on the presentation pack. So it gives you an opportunity, let me get it on the screen.
Shall we scroll down?
It gives you, it gives you an opportunity to look at what we have suggested as officers, to see whether that's in keeping with what you want to, to approve, or is there anything else you would like to do? So the idea is to keep, in keeping on the switch on lights with a themed event, so this year, we did a movie theme a couple of years ago, we're doing a Narnia one this year, or this is what we're suggesting. We will have fun, fun fair rides on the market square, we'll have the Christmas market down the High Street. Santa will come in on his river sleigh, the schools will sing Christmas carols, and then follow Santa with a Narnia themed lantern parade. And then there'll be other activities within the large core Christmas Craft Fair. And a themed activity in the small court, the old tea room. On the Saturday, they'll continue with the Christmas market. We're going to work hard with the stall holders on our weekly market to try and get them engaged and decorate their stalls and continue the theme of, of Christmas with them. And also have a, a family Christmas disco in the Carnegie on Saturday evening. And then on Sunday, we dress these rooms and, and turn it into Santa's grotto, and have families come and visit Santa. We're hoping to get a steam engine and the mini steam engines on the market square to give the kids some rides. So if there's anything else that councillors want to see us do as part of that, this is the time to sort of put those into the mix, because the next phase that we will bring back next month is phase two of this new decision-making process, which will put a bit of cost in against this to make sure that we're within the allocated budget of £3,500. So.
I was about to say, have we got the budget, that's the phase two, so this is just ideas.
This is just ideas to see whether councillors are happy as to go down that line.
Any comments?
Yeah, probably not, I didn't bring it up, but there's a lot we've got to go, I just thought, no. Have any thoughts about next year in terms of the anniversary of the, the second war, the day, things like that, because the military anniversary seemed to go down well with public, as I know. You know, you're going to try and look at things for ideas for next year, but if we are going to do something, then we start all rolling into the last.
And we can certainly put that on as an agenda item for next month's meeting, so Chris, we've visited the 50th anniversary, 50th birthday of the Thetford Singers. And one of the organisers there, Simon Barnett, is also involved in one of the military bands, and we had a conversation that day as to victory in Europe in May next year, so we're, hopefully, he's making calls to try and get them booked in, so they are a marching band as well, so that would be good. So again, it's possibly an agenda item to try and collate everybody's thoughts, so we can get cracking on that. But we want to, we want to, I mean, the good thing about that is that's more of a celebration. So we will have swing dances and all that kind of stuff, but it, it will be part of this process, Stuart, so we will bring it back to.
I'm just mindful of the, the lead time on a lot of these things to get things organised.
And also they'll be in demand, and again, it's a.
Yeah, and also if we do something for the day, just be mindful, we do have a BJ day as well, which is always placed second street, and I know there's some local people who do feel that, because I know it's a treat, so, but we just have that sort of.
So we're at the last meeting, but we did discuss that, and one of the things that we have done is talked about how we can how we can improve that event along Nun's Bridges, and one of the things that we spoke about is sometimes it's really hard to hear. Yeah, so we've invested in a portable speaker, so we can make those, but again, we've all agreed last meeting that that's going to be very much in our schedule, rather than a second thought. Because in this area, families have more connection with, you know, Far East Prisoner of War, because our, our people went to the Far East rather than Europe in some respects, so it should be, it should be more so in our thoughts, but we are improving that, and it's definitely on the agenda.
I think you're right to, to make the point that a difference in mood between the two, Happy Days in, in May, the other one's always difficult because of the prisons of war, and there are people in Southend who feel very strongly about it.
And one of the things, I don't know if you've mentioned yet, but we've been meeting with Royal Brits lately. We, that's one of the things that came up, wasn't it, that we're, we're going to be working with them to make sure that that side of it's okay. And the BJ day is well represented, but also we're, we're working on getting all the other sort of stuff with them, but we've got to organise another meeting with them.
Yeah, I mean, we also.
We did say in the July.
We also talked about, I mean, you know, I've already ever been down there once, and I was a bit horrified about not hearing the, the vigour at the time, but also we need to put the local authority on, on a call to make sure that the grass is cut and things like that, so it is, we've also bought a mobile flagpole, so we can take that down there, so I think we can definitely enhance the whole aspect of that memorial event, so.
Conscious of time, we've sort of skipped around onto a slightly different area, but was there anything else you wanted to add? I mean, I'm very happy to suggest, and I think we should note that we make on the next month's agenda, the heritage events, so the day and BJ day next year, so we start planning from now on. I was also going to ask for an update on remembrance days like last six, and we've got an action point, but is there anything else you wanted to raise, Stuart, before you have to interrupt?
No, obviously the heritage master plan is something, and key, obviously, we wrote the update that we're not going to get the, to do the big writing. But obviously, we can keep that ball rolling, especially in terms of, you know, the £20 million, it does have that natural fit. But if you can get £20,000 for the lottery, and the twenty, you can then deliver more than a buck.
Yeah, so you probably won't be there, I think that's something that we can certainly discuss later. To be honest, I personally am proposing keeping it on the agenda item anyway, so we'll keep talking about it each month, because I think it's one of those big things that need to continue, so.
I've already put my hand up twice, the town board has met, and we'll be giving, I'll be giving an update on it at all council. Hopefully we're lucky and good. But I've really seen what this, it looked a lot better what was announced today, but they've waited for an announcement today, on whether they're going to go ahead or pull it. So by the, by full council, we should have an idea of what's happening. And I will be giving a brief on what happened at, at May.
So I had been keen on keeping an update for that town fund to see what's happening with it, but yeah, I haven't seen any news on it. Let's go back on to the Christmas Light Switch On, and so I think we were right, I think we were just noticing there's basically a plan for the Christmas Light Switch On, potentially some ideas of what we want to put together on there, or what is being proposed. We'll be getting costings next month, but it was just at this point asking if any councillors have any comments or thoughts on what was posted, if you scroll to the correct page, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Have a look at that.
It is something that came up last year, and it was that we tried to get the retailers involved, maybe write to all the retailers and say, you know, this year we want to enhance the, the feel of Christmas and include the retailers in it, and maybe they would be keen to do a, a Christmas display in their window, and we'll give a a prize of some sort for the, the best display. I might even get a little shield or something and put that out, I'll probably pay for that to whatever people think is fitting. Because I can have a little cup or something up there, so best window, this Christmas window display and things like that, but if we could, is there anywhere we could go to get a letter written to all the retailers, just to say, this is what we want to do?
Get a letter, I mean, the, the best thing is to come from the mayor, and we, and, and that's a great way to start promoting Christmas Light Switch On and Christmas, so we can get it sort of organised maybe two weeks before the Christmas light event, so they're usually decorating their, their shops at that point, and.
If we can get a letter out, I think we'll just begin in the autumn, would probably make sense. We're talking about leading times, shops doing leading times, there might be a group of protests, I think perhaps, you know, if we look in September time, perhaps to start writing that letter?
Oh, yeah, September later.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need someone to collate all the addresses, I don't know, do that, I think something from the post office to tell you what shops are up.
We, we do, we do have a, a register, but, you know, they change quite regularly, so your one's probably more up to date than ours.
Yeah, I'll get one sorted out this week, or, just give yourself a job there, haven't you? Yes, I'll, I'll get that sorted out for next week.
Just before I go, on that theme, I'm just wondering, is there any way we can, if the units in Emmercombe are not, they're not used again, have a word with some of those pop-up displays in those windows?
So we can have a word with them and they get them.
Because I think Paul Carver would be up for it, it's just, you know, you want something to be in back of your colour, rather than the dead shops.
So we, we talked about this idea before with Christmas displays, but we also mentioned that a lot of towns do it for remembrance as well. So it's something that you can, you know, keep rolling all the way through the year, once people get used to the idea that actually we're going to be looking to see who's done, made enough in our town.
We do Christmas, Easter, remember, do all of them, but getting the initial, I think Christmas is the best time to get it started.
Christmas, were you suggesting a competition of sorts? I think Christmas, it makes sense, obviously, I don't think. But I agree, it would be nice to get displays out, I think.
Also, what we're thinking of that was not necessarily a competition, but to highlight the fact that we're working together with, you know, people in a town who are trying to, you know, a part of the remembrance, so it'd be more to do with our social media than, you know, a walk-around competition.
Yeah.
You know, a few pictures of local shops that make an effort, I think, you know.
If they're making effort, I don't see why we can't help promote that.
I'll just leave you all, thank you very much.
See you later, good luck. All right, enjoy, so much, yeah?
I think you have something to offer.
Yeah. Oh, right, okay. In terms of actions arising from the, this, we've started working out, essentially, I think, getting the press list, so we can inform shops about potentially decorating their displays, and also looking to see if we can, if they're not paired up with our unit's from the samples. If we're remembering, if we can also put an item on that, I know you're still part of the committee, I was going to say, it was an action point, we're going to discuss it then, but perhaps we can discuss what we can do for that then. Any other comments on the Christmas, or I'd be very happy to propose with sort of that outline and what we've just been talking about?
Because there's so much happens at our Christmas events, we're slightly dislocated, you know, and we talked about it before, where it's down by the river and then it's back up here, but it's it's just finding a way to link that all together in a kind of canny poster that almost gives it a Christmas trail, be there at this time, there at that time, because otherwise what happens is you end up with a load of these event things that go out, you know, they always say they've missed it.
Yeah.
So I think it's a shame, because we've got some really good ones on in the town. I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, by the way, I'm just saying, you just need to.
I think it might be clever design, right, because you're right.
Almost like a Christmas trail, be in the river, Santa comes up here, and, you know.
It didn't, it didn't quite work for D-Day, but it did actually work for last year's Christmas lights, so the fact that Amber was engaging with schools, and you had a lot of schoolchildren involved with carol singing and, and lantern making and things like that, you almost, there was 200 kids down there, so there's almost your core families are already there, and they're there quite early, so they will come up to the market, so it kicks off the one of the other things that we're really mindful is, mindful of is that we've improved the riverside. Continental Christmas Market is in King Street, everybody gravitates to the market square for our switch on. But all the lights and the tree and everything.
Yeah, all down there.
So when the lights go on, it's really effective, the icicle lights that outline the, the gilt hall. What we're trying to do this year is also get a second tree on the market square, so when the lights go up, the tree lights up as well. We'll still have one in St Peter's, because otherwise we'll get Brito as that end of town saying they're being left out, everybody forgets about Bridge Street, well, White Hart Street, etc. We'll still have one there, but we're going to try and get one onto the market square as well, because.
Yeah, it'd be good. Fair time we did, we used to have one before.
We did, yeah, there's a, yeah. That sounds good, I think we just need to note and say, yeah, if you can go and add on those things, that'd be great, and we look forward to seeing it with costings, yeah. So, don't think I'm ahead of myself now, I've moved to 16624 partnership events to see if I've delivered and planned events. So hoping you've read through it, there is anything particularly you wanted to add, please do, but I'd be everyone's had a chance to look through and essentially have a quick update.
So in terms of, the next up in the partnership event, it's our Family Fun Day in that really busy week. That's planned for Thursday the 1st of August, so remember, we've got the Riverside Events at the weekend as well, so we've been talking to North County's community and family services. And they approached us very much on the back of what we did with the Big Green Fair. Lots of different agencies coming together who are involved with families and, and children's services to try and put on something where everybody can come and enjoy free of charge. And we, as we want to make the marketplace more vibrant, suggested that that take place on the market square. So we've got 16 groups coming along on Thursday the 1st between 11 and 1. Weather permitting, we'll have the sandpit open, we'll have the tea room open, serving ice creams and things like that. There's lots of different activities that various different organisations are going to deliver to make it a really good event, I'm sure. Fingers crossed for the weather, and, and hopefully lots of those things that you might just be able to see on the poster happening. As in, first of all, not something we make any money on, but it's something that we deliver post from the Carnegie.
And similarly, we don't, we might not have any money, we don't actually make any costs such as part of the staff.
We don't, I mean, and the start time is very limited on that particular day, we're so busy, I've drawn the short straw, so I'll be getting the gazebos and tables out supporting the guys. So really, it's minimal start time to deliver a really good event.
Any, if anyone, if there's any other events listed or anything?
So you, sorry, you can see on this slide is the ones that we've already delivered, so we've mentioned about the Big Green Fair in conjunction with the Setford Environmental Group. Again, I think Katie and I were starting, starting on that day. And apart from a bit of an overcast start, it was a really nice day. And again, I'm hoping that we can join up with these guys and make it an annual event, because I think it was fairly well received. In terms of the other events, they are sort of shared delivery with the National Theatre touring programme with the Pillar Man. That was on a 50/50 ticket split, we made £240 on that one. Tangle with the Angles is a family orientated event, again, it's a little bit more niche, but again, we made some money on, on the delivery of that. The fourth one you see there is a, is a partnership that we have got involved with Humor Comedy Club, who do lots of comedy clubs around the eastern region, again, we used to do comedy clubs, it's been a long time since it's happened in the Carnegie or the Guildhall, we're trying to get it off the ground. And unfortunately, this one made a lot of, overall loss of £127. We've got one more in a couple of weeks' time to do, and then we'll re-evaluate whether it's worth trying to pursue it, but you'll see a lot more marketing going into promoting that event as we leave into the next fortnight before delivery. So hopefully we can bring some of that back, and then we can put comedy back on the market, back on the agenda in terms of Thetford.
Any, any questions? Can ask a default one, which is my, just been missing a second, we've got a nice table there, but we've not got the numbers in now, we've got the numbers under the, it's always a good one, so.
The notes evolve.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so I think we need to put those numbers in, in future, but you will see that, we're going to try and, you know, even though they've gone and we've discussed it, we'll keep. even though they've gone and we've discussed it, we'll keep that on, on the agenda. So we can see that.
And that's how I personally, just to sort of make sure keeping track of you and then responding if there's any of those trends that we potentially be aware of as well. I also just wanted to check in terms of the loss, the 100% in pound loss, potentially that is including sort of bar sale or something like that. Didn't make up the losses.
It didn't make up the loss, no. Cool. But yeah, so we've had a discussion. We're gonna, you know, we've, we've got, we've got another one up and coming. So we're going to start trying to promote jugs of beer and things like that to make it a little bit more hopefully productive in trying to increase bar sales. We are starting it in the Guildhall to try and resurrect it. So we're starting it smaller. And then hopefully we can gravitate to the Carnegie where they used to be. And that's a lot more easier to deliver these kind of events. But we're keen to start from a smaller intimate environment and we actually want to promote the Guildhall anyway.
When we've got events like this that are, you know, potentially losing a bit of money or just sort of breaking even, we advertise those by, you know, our usual means, which is posters and the likes. Because they are, you know, if people come in to deliver entertainment, is there any way that we can capture a snapshot of that entertainment? Or even an introduction in moving talking stuff which will, you know, almost like when you see, come and see Peter Kay live at wherever. You don't see it just as a poster. There's always a little snapshot of the person going, come and see me, I'm down at Carnegie or whatever.
Sometimes, sometimes we do. Sometimes, I mean, we do not, not, I know what you mean, not probably to that degree. It's something that we might have to ask. It's more a snapshot of their performance. So look, you know, yeah, we've got a Coldplay tribute coming tomorrow. So we could put a little video just to try and tease them. The big thing with comedy is the guys who run it, there's a caveat in there that, you know, things happen and we might not get those.
Yeah.
But I think Martin, who is the M C, and who is one of the comedians that come and act as a comedian stroke M C, I think he can do that.
Yeah.
So I think it could shout, they're little guys. I know what you mean.
And potentially when you, if you watch, I'm just going to say Peter Kay, because it's the only other name, I think. It's not my favourite bloke, but. But so if you saw that, a video of him doing a show somewhere, at the end there were people go, oh, and it brilliant. Oh, it was, I loved that. It brilliant, you know, and they'd be. So again, a bit of after action stuff, when it's gone, people go, bloody, I missed that. I wish I've gone. There'd be another one on in a few years' time, in a few years' time. But sometimes people don't know what they've missed. Can you see what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, we, we all sit in here and go, what great event it was and half a, half a town. They're been knew.
So don't want to change something. Well, while we're on the subject of advertising, doesn't seem to be as prolific as it was. Where Hazel.
Well, Hazel's still part of it. So Hazel is the comms officer. So whether Hazel sits in that, that department or this one, she is the comms officer. Uh, what we, because Hazel's job has grown, we have allocated some of the responsibilities to one of the other staff within the, within the team. And she will look at some of this kind of stuff. She's very good at poster production. Um, she's actually very good at creating these little trailer style videos. So I think we can get her on, but she's, she's going through a bit of a learning curve because we ran into her responsibilities now. But Hazel is very much part of that. So again, I'll be having conversations with our comms officer because that's part of her job. Um, so, yeah. But.
Yeah. So I guess it's noted, but we'll just put more effort into advertising is the work, the action we're going to take.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is to, is to ramp up for each, I mean, in the decision-making process, uh, the next stage of these. So it's actually to tell you guys exactly what we did. So we have the list, you know, so. And then when we have the debrief, if it's something that's not worked, we can look at that and go, well, do you know what? You've made every effort. You've covered every face. It's just one of those things. Or actually we didn't do that, or there may be a suggestion to try and improve it. So, um.
But there isn't anything else. We're trying it now anyways. Any other questions on partnership events scheduled upcoming? I'll have one brief one just on that in Bedford former screen on the green events. Um, just to check how are we working closely with the art partners? I noticed Ancient House Museum, Charles Borough Museum are involved. Do we know exactly what they'll be doing on the day itself?
So it's, so, so our, our involvement really focuses around what's on, on the green. Um, Barbara, who is one of the officers at Breckland District Council, is taking care of those additional parties such as Ancient House, Charles Borough Museum and the library, et cetera, et cetera. So that's her part in the, it's her role in the partnership. We have to deliver, um, and all the operational logistics of getting deck chairs and things like that. We're taking care of the third and fourth, basically.
Sure. We're looking after our bits.
Yeah.
And they're, and essentially doing their bit in the eyes of Breckland rather than us actually.
Yeah.
Any minimum.
Yeah.
I have a feedback meeting to ask. We'll feedback meeting on Friday. So I'll be meeting with her just to see how all the partnership issues are coming together. And I'll feedback to answers like that.
That's really helpful. Thanks, Alan. No, no, there's no. Move on to item 16724, hired third party events. I think this is, this is very much more just for reference by virtue of the fact it's people in high open venues. It's not a cost, it's just useful to see them there. Um, I don't think I had it in my first book, but anyone wants to comment on?
So I can zumba there yours, aren't they? I went, well, quite a few weeks. He went to the Bedford Seamus birthday concert. That was, that was good. I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
It's a good one. The 50th birthday concert. I know you were there because you were sitting front.
A couple of people said, I might be back there.
Everyone happy to note that? Right. Item 16824, Port and Educational Project and School Liaisons. Um, I noticed that tab with, uh, obviously been a few little things going on. The mosaic project in particular is, have people had a chance to read this? If they have comments on this to start with.
The mosaic company, there's been a bit of a story, hasn't it? I was meant to come down to do it, but it never happened.
It's been a hard slog for, for our education officer. I mean, we've had a conversation with a school today and it's getting to that, it's getting to that period in the school year where they're gearing up to go on school holidays. And there is one type of school mentioning no names that have said, can we just send them their certificates and they'll sort it out with a special assembly in September? No, we're, this was part of a project that we were involved in. We're quite happy to come along in September and, you know, do something. But we want to, we want to make sure that the children are recognised by us as well. So it has been a hard slog. But I, you know, there are a lot of things going on with the schools and it is hard to organise sometimes. And I feel for, I feel for our education officer at times. She is very frustrating one. But she, yeah, she has tried. But it has been a really good project and it was one that was highlighted in the original Guildhall Heritage Hub project. And there's still some elements that we can develop that.
We've had some other issues with communication, not, not from our end. From one of the schools, I had a message at four o'clock, Thursday, July the 4th. What time are you coming to present the prizes of the academy?
Okay.
Sorry, what's this about? We've never had an invitation. Double check with Karen, double check for me the next day. There's actually nothing to do or have an invite. And this is, I don't want to have a, this is not a pop at anyone, but we had the academy were supposed to come to the civic reception, they require, they cancelled four o'clock job. There seems to be a problem with communication.
So, so I, yeah, okay. So I will have a meeting with the civic officer in terms of making sure.
It wasn't a call, it's a call.
But, you know, so if she doesn't know about it, she doesn't know about it. There's not much we can do, you know, she's not Mystic Meg. She doesn't, she can't read the situation like that. But if we have, sometimes, you know, sometimes you have to call these people up, as I said, our educational, so, um, you know, pushes and challenges them all the time. I think we need to do that. We have a process where they have to complete a form. So as the mayor, Chris, you know exactly what your expectations are in terms of what you need to do, whether you need to make a speech, whether it's cutting the ribbon, what do you need to dress in, et cetera, et cetera. So they are, they have to understand there's a process to go through as well. And sometimes they're not particularly good at doing that. But we need to understand that and we need to prompt them if that's the case.
I felt quite disappointed. I didn't want the fact, you know, I had to go and let him down. I mean, it was a strange day to go on the 4th. It's not going on.
Would you like me to write to school and just see if we can, I'm not too sure who they're communicating with, because sometimes they could be communicating with. So I could actually say if you want to communicate, there's a civic address, there's a mayor address and there's a mail that sits at our council. And these things they can, you know, keep that.
Don't want to have that again.
Yeah, okay.
So I think also might be an element of just being, we need to work on communication now to schools, because obviously it's slightly important. I think we, I think we all agree that it's nice to get the schools involved. I know they've got a lot of pressures as well. So if there's miscommunications happening, might be good to try and work out what we can do on that.
So in terms of our education work, what Amber does is she's very particular, when she talks with, who is the contractor? She will get lots of teachers bombarded once they know what we do. Or could you come and do this, come and do that? Yes, but can you go through so and so? Because that's the vehicle that we use. Maybe we need as a civic team to turn around and say, if we're working with this business or with this organisation, who is your communication representative? Because this is ours, the civic officer is ours and let them thrash it out. Um, so maybe we, we need to, we need to do that.
Another chance, Paul?
I don't think we should beat ourselves up too much about schools because working with them a lot, they, they want everything. And then, you know, something changes in the school and they have to put all their focus into that. And then they drop you like a stone and then, you know, we're quick to ask later on. So I think it's just the nature of, you know, modern tests and schools and staff and, you know.
Me being a bit of a cynic, what I'm worried about in those circumstances is if someone has dropped the ball their end, who are they blaming?
Yeah.
That's one. I want to make sure that they understand that it's not our fault. It's, you know, because kids are going to be upset.
But I agree. I didn't want us to, our civic team didn't themselves to get the blame on the, the mayor didn't turn up, but.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, I'm going to ask you to call me a question. Do you get school people's visits at from? I was very confused by this chart. Um, is it referring specifically to the joining R B, another unit?
No, sorry. It's just, no, it's all of the activities that we've done in conjunction with the school. So whether it's, um, an education programme around Homes and Table or it's the mosaic project or it's, it's, it's the total um, numbers of those groups that are visited.
In which case, could I suggest we have a breaking number, total number, rather than a percentage? Because 35% of the number, I don't know, is.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I have to be honest, I looked at this a lot on different computers and we could do with one of the three blue ones being a different colour. Because the three of them are blue.
Yeah.
At the risk of going into designing bar charts, I was checking out your bar chart, might just break down because I went down the second column. So we can see it a bit more clearly. Um, well, I mean, yeah, I think that might be helpful. I'm going to start working out. I don't want to do that, otherwise I don't have any other comments. Going to have tonight's report. Thank you. Um, the financial report, the period end of 2024. Um, just to see, discuss financial reports. Um, it's just a note, but if there's any.
If I could, one of the, this is still a work in progress. We only finished the year end in, in, in June. So we just, we have to restructure the whole budget, the whole estate accounts, and they're not quite perfect. We've just filed the exercise. I said it not presenting anything. Your income figures will be current and the expenditure figures will be as current as budget. We've just moved them around. So, so when you see significant variances, um, and there's still some tidying up to do. If you look at the second one, for example, on heritage and the beds general, there's a mix up between newsletters, between, uh, printing and advertising and things like that. So we'll come up with a bit more stricter protocols and then we'll be able to, 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 to sort that out. And the separate, separate green shouldn't be there necessarily, the end screen project, we put it as expenditure. Normally we treat that as a project and we keep it off the, off the streets. So there's still a little bit of tidying up. So if anyone has any specific questions, hopefully before we have corporate services next week, I'll, I'll work on this. Uh, but you know, starting in July, uh, figures, it'll be a little bit more, make more sense, hopefully.
Thanks. Would that help caution? Can I ask straight to one question?
Yeah, okay.
This is on the Carnegie Guildhall repairs and maintenance. Um, we noticed it was higher in budgets, its approach to addressing systemic backlog maintenance. Um, is this again part of that chapel or does that mean that based?
No, no, that's, that's genuinely the Guildhall repairs and maintenance. So that's, that's, that's the actual figure. Uh, it was a lot higher. I had a heart attack because it was 27,000 and I realised that the heating contract had been allocated, which is, which is, which is a, that's potentially funded. That is, I think we're going to have a little bit more, uh, because we are catching up in the backlog. I started an exercise with, to go, to get a backlog maintenance plan for this building done so that we can actually sit down and start planning when we do things. Because at the moment it's a bit of, of, of reaction. So that line item will have a little bit more support to it.
Yeah.
But we have, are spending more than we budgeted. And, you know, I have put the budget together. When I look at these things, I just scratch my head and wonder, you know, is that the day I woke up too early or went to bed too late? Because the crazy figures.
So that's likely to continue to track ahead of that, basically.
I think it will. I think it will for, for the six months. And then maybe hopefully it'll tap off.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Don't know if there's any other lines I particularly noted. Does anyone else have anything that they want to note or discuss? Happy tonight? Right, noted, thanks, Alan. Item 17024, Heritage Master Plan. Leave the decisions to be made here. Um, so obviously at the last meeting, we discussed a master plan and how I turn my action. I understood, um, just a bit of background and please correct me if I make a mistake when I summarise this, but essentially from. There was 14,000 pound spend from our, the heritage grant previously received. Um, and we're inquiring as to what we could actually use that to pass our, something for future bid. And so that now is not possible.
There was, uh, so there was a possible, if we need to look at how to spend the 14,000, someone was supposed to come back to us, but I'm not, I have.
So they have come back. Yeah, they've come back. So what they won't do is allow us to use that underspend to fund the next stage of the, any master plan, uh, plan, um, bid. What they have done is extended the life of the current bid to try and add strength to a potential bid by doing some additional surveys in King's House Gardens. So we won't lose it entirely. We'll use it to do stuff that will support any future bid. But we can't use that to pay for someone to write a future bid. It wasn't in the original brief and they won't allow us to do that.
So what can we do with that?
So basically some of the stuff that they've asked, there are some additional condition surveys, especially for King's House. Um, and also some surveys in terms of the buildings within the gardens that might help with the next stage bid.
Does it have to be surveys? Is there anything we can do in terms of actually progressing on getting any of the buildings open? Say for example, St Peter's Church.
No, we can't do that.
No, no, we are literally bound to the ASL.
So then that's the kind of stuff that was allocated, the money was allocated to do. So we've done all the, um, read the stage two title and surveys and things like that. So that's fine. But not to do anything else because it wasn't in the original bid.
With the leveling up from Town Hall stuff, obviously part of the documentation that they've got, do we're going to do, is the.
part of the documentation that they've got, do we're going to do is, is the Heritage Master Plan. And they're looking at what's what early spends to, to do stuff. And one of the suggestions to put forward, I'm going to put a report in at full council. He's possibly working with us and Heritage Master Plan on St Peter's Church. As one of the early projects, um, is there anything that us could sort of say that might help to push it that way? Is there something that they're going to do?
Well, the, the final document that, um, Tricola have produced as part of this, this stage of the master plan is that supporting document. So we can provide them a copy of that to show that all of this work has been done. Um, we're in a good shape in terms of the NHLF are reasonably favourable in supporting any future bid as long as we can, you know, we can actually contribute to that, um, to that sum of money, um, that, you know, nothing's a hundred percent. So we, we've got all of that and it's a very, you know, comprehensive. So we've got all that. So if, if that leveling up fund is willing to put some money into it, we may well be able to move forward. We have been told through the conversations between Tricola and the NHLF, um, that they are very keen to support any future bid. And the areas that they're very keen to support are St Peter's. That's good. That's what we want. They're very keen in terms of supporting activity, in terms of usage of King's House and King's House Gardens. And possibly parts of Charles Burrow Museum. Anything else, we've got to work hard to try and persuade them, but actually they fit in with what we, we really want to, to, to look at. As far as I'm aware of the councillors, um, St Peter's is top of the list though. They don't want to see a heritage building that's great to listed to sit idle and not be used, and nor do we. So we need to find, one thing that they will be asking for this bid and support is, um, micro projects to, um, deliver certain little projects that will determine whether it's a viable proposition to open St Peter's for that, um, for that use. So they're not going to give you masses, they're not going to give you millions of pounds if we can't prove that one, it's viable to use St Peter's in that way. And two, there's a public demand for that to happen. So, um, there's a lot of work we've got to do, but money wise, they're very keen to support us. And, but what we've got to do is find that gap of if they're going to support us to the tune of seventy five percent, you know, where's the other twenty five percent coming from? Leveling up is that avenue. Great stuff.
Yeah, I don't know how much they could be able to do, but, uh, what I've said, because we've basically been tasked with go away, come back on the thirty first, because we haven't had a problem yet. But if go away, come back on the thirty first with some ideas of where you think we could do early quick fixes. Uh, and I've, the, the two, three actually, I think that we put for, I need to was opening up the river. Um, St Peter's Church and the CCTV in the town, which are all in the master plan and with the town development plan. Uh, so I'm keen to push that forward. Um, but obviously I can't do that without full council saying, yeah, that's the way to go. Uh, so I'll, I'll be presenting the report at full council. But I'm glad that that's, it's possible that we could sort of push St Peter's as, as a, an early avenue.
I think what, I think what the council are asked to do though, is come to some, um, agreement as to what they would like to see with St Peter's. Because there's going to be a two-stage process. We need to put together a business plan in terms of potentially how we would like to see St Peter's used. Um, to then gain the first phase, um, introduction funding if we like, to support the micro projects. To do that, we also need some funding to make it safe. So there's those two initial elements to look at. But again, they're not.
How much to make it safe?
Well, I think it's about four hundred thousand pounds, wasn't it? Just to, just to make safe the roof and, um, and the tower. But again, it's not, you know, but what the NHLF will say to you is, okay, so we're going to, you know, we're going to help you do that. For what reasons? And you can't just turn around and say, well, we'd love to see it used for so and so. We've got to put together a comprehensive business case of where we want to be at the end of it. And also how we're going to prove in the interim that that's, that business plan is going to work. So that's where the micro projects come in.
Where are we with that? And what do you need from us to get you there?
So we, we are, we are with the final document, which Tricola, as you know, provided various different layouts and ideas of how we could use, which in conversations with the NHLF, they seem to be favourable. What we now need to do is to turn that into a business plan and submit the bid. And this is where the next stage of the master plan needs professional support because we do not have those skills within the, within the team. We have, as officers, we have experience in delivering those kind of micro projects. But we don't have the experience within the team to draft, um, the business plan and funding bid.
So if we, if I remember correctly from our timeline, now we're going to start looking to go after tender for someone to write that bid. But where is the money going to come to pay for that? That's the idea.
Yeah, well, I think our next, so, you know, our next step is, is we can appoint a project manager to, to scope all that out. And I think that's where we had our PhD in the meeting, we discussed that. So that's, so our next step is to, is to find a project manager. And then the second thing will be to get an idea of where we, what those bits will be. And that exercise will happen as part of that, part of that process where they'll have to decide what is the final blueprint, by the way, for St Peter's and how we're going to put it all together. So we'll be dedicated, a dedicated project manager to drive this and to do the consultations with council and to get that final bid in. And that's really what the next step is. That's what we really come to the committee to ask, to, to go down that particular route.
That's the decision we're having to make now, sorry.
If you, yeah.
Yeah.
So where do we, um, sorry, where do we get that, the money for that project manager then?
Uh, that, we've got a savings reserve, for example, so we might just, that, we, we, we've, uh, you know, I think we've made a decision, that's what a council.
Yeah.
We'll, if we put it, we'll put it as a project. So we, we haven't allocated out any project money for twenty twenty four, twenty five. So that could be one of the projects that will actually go into that.
Okay.
So Tric, so Tricola were, were advocating to get to that big submission stage, they were talking about twenty to twenty five thousand pounds to do that. Um, so in terms of the levelling up support, maybe that's the initial thing that, you know, we go and ask.
Will you have an hour to spare next week that I can come in? We can get this written up so that I can do it as a presentation to full council and also to the town fund, because I, full council needs to be behind it before I go and say to the town, what about doing that? And they go, yeah, that's fine. And the full council says, nah. So I don't want to really be, because I'm, I'm there as a representative, representative of full council, uh, as the town council. So I need to know that the town council are going to say, yeah, that's where we want to go, see what you can get.
But in terms.
Put it forward to town, to the town board.
But honestly, in terms of councillors, what we need to know is what your ultimate vision is of use of St Peter's. I mean, Tricola, we, you know, again, they mapped out two or three options. One of them was this heritage skill centre with the, with the flex of being able to, to turn it into some exhibition, you know, event type stuff quickly. But the key anchor project or, or or what was being delivered from St Peter's was a heritage skill centre, which is something that the NHLF said that there's a demand for in this area. If you turn around and say, I want it to be a music rally, you've got to prove to the NHLF that they're going to give you, you know, two million pounds or one and a half million pounds for what? Where's the demand? There's, I mean, we've got the Carnegie next door, we've got the Guild Hall. Is it something, you know, that they're going to support? I'm very much down there. So you have to, we have to, you know, decide what we want to get from St Peter's.
But that's not a business decision. Business decisions.
That, that, that's something.
The next stage, so that we can get to that stage, we'll be back there for that.
But that's something this project manager will have to have the steer from the councillors. Because they won't be able to do what we're asking them to do if they don't have a clear steer.
Well, could I?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I have your time next week? Any particular day, any hour or?
No, so next week is good. The week after is horrendous. So next week is good. Anytime, but seeing you know.
That's the same with me.
You can actually do me in as well, because.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Trying to make sure I keep a timeline so that we can keep track of that. So, yeah. Um, okay. So for our decision here is that we need essentially proposals to, um, um, what is the actual motion that we would need to propose?
Just give a, 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 a project manager to, to do that side. So we don't, that's, we don't have the in-house expertise to do that.
Do I have a proposal? Quick, second up. Welcome to the event. And, and do we need to vote tonight? Is anyone, anyone in favour? Yeah, me too. Thanks. Um, Christmas lights tender, one seven, one twenty four. Um, tender for the Christmas lights installation, pre-season submission, uh, detail of noon. Uh, for giving, if I'm correctly, do we need some volunteers? Ideally from this committee, two volunteers from this committee.
Two.
That's always pretty. Social responsibility.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'd actually got my notes saying we need three members to volunteer. So, good. Uh, three volunteers, um, give me, and do you mind asking me to explain it slightly in terms of?
Well, basically what, what we've done is we've received three tenders so far. So, 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 so and really it's just to evaluate, uh, 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 I'll ask you as the chair to come and open up the tenders with us. We'll write the evaluation sheets and then the chair, whoever it is, will then fill in the, fill in their sheets, hand it in to me. Everyone independently, the, the committee members evaluate the tenders, put them together and then we, we, we take it to the next stage, which will be going to go to full council. Cause I think it's about the threshold of it.
Yes, um.
That's twelve o'clock this Friday.
That's the closing date of submissions.
But when would this meet? Yeah, before Thursday, Friday, the morning.
No, 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 it's, it's going to this council meeting, but, but this weekend, we'll get this.
So.
It'll come to the next committee, the committee will then make recommendations.
But we need to have had someone volunteer ahead of next, as you understand me.
Sorry, I didn't expect it that way.
Um, so it's just a market tenders basically, isn't it? And so it can be done in your own time. It's not a sort of, you have to say at any particular time or a meeting, as I understand it.
Okay, you're all free. You're all free volunteers.
Yeah, ideally, which considering so many people have been unable to attend, makes it, uh, unhappy. We can open it out to councillors, uh, that's because it doesn't need to be people from the.
That's, that's.
So perhaps if we just send an email out to councillors asking for volunteers?
Yeah, I, I'm, the only reason I'm reluctant to do it is because I'm trying to do the remembrance stuff and I don't want to sort of then promise to do something else. That's the only reason why I'm not putting me out there. I like Christmas.
We can send out.
If I can develop, can I write to the, the neighbour and our future signature to the councillors?
Us?
That could be.
Yeah, sure.
People have more weight, I think.
Fair enough. I don't need to propose or second anything, but that's fair. Right, item one twenty seven twenty four, action points from previous meetings. Um, which one crew does? Um, I think I mentioned earlier, I was wondering if, um, I can sort of touch on it. Um, one I know, I thought twenty four is about the remembrance parade document, I think you, well, you shared that. I wondered if we were just having a quick update of remembrance?
Yeah, so we've, we've kind of done the, uh, the plan. Um, Rob has been very slow on I use my words carefully, on responding appropriately to the, to the plan's changes. He agreed massively at the meeting, pre-onside, has done nothing with it since, despite a couple of requests. So what my last correspondence is, you know, unless I get a negative back, we're going to assume that everything's okay and this is what we're going to do. And then we, I can deliver that as a document and populate it. Now I can do that through you if, if that's the way we should do it or. Um, so this is, this is basically what, what the council wants to do of the, on the day of remembrance.
Every year.
Yeah, every year. So it'll be, and it might be an evolving plan, but it's, this is, this is the start of it. And next year we'll put a couple of tweaks on it and so it'll be a document that exists because we run it rather than somebody else.
It would chest, then it makes sense to find an appropriate, um, heritage events committee and sort of, uh, meeting and put it on the agenda annually at that point. So.
Okay, so when's the next one? Can that be, it needs to be done by August.
Yeah.
So. Right, entering the meeting.
Question on the second one, do you know? But Warren, I was meant to have a certificate to take up to the land to make the.
Well, apparently he's not, he's not, um, so when I spoke to, um, got the dial, Warren, oh, Will, sorry, Will, yeah. Um, Josh is not, it's not the apprentice Josh, it's, it's one of the technical directors. So basically you sign the letters, they've gone, um, he's very, you know, pleased that we did that and he's quite happy to have provided the beat. And so he's, he's happy with that. So.
Yeah. I mean, I said back into remembrance from, um, I was thinking about it earlier and I was thinking it would D date. And I thought one of the things that worked quite well was having a presentation to councillors at sort of a planning meeting ahead of a planning meeting and just sort of filling them in. And I wondered if that would be useful to do as well for Remembrance Day itself, so that the councillors have another opportunity to be fully informed and also sort of what we're doing on the day, that kind of thing. Um, so it is, people think that's a good idea?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to share everything. My only worry is we agreed what we were doing on D day, then we changed it. And I would hate to, us to get to August and then go, no, that's not what we want. Then we've only got, it's the next, you know, within a very short period, we've got to try to change.
Yeah.
So I, I think we should, particularly as it's the first one, we definitely need to sort of let all the other councillors see it.
Yeah.
You know, because there's easily something that I could miss or we could miss.
Okay, so there's a way of, I think.
I think the presentation could be, I mean, as a committee, we have raised various different, um, issues that we've had in terms of sound and all the rest of it. We seem to have found solutions for those. So I think it's probably just the wider council being a, their peers being allowed rather than actually having an input into what's going to happen, because the remembrance parade is a remembrance parade. And I think every councillor is quite happy with that, but there were some issues about things like sound and all the rest of it, that they just wanted improvements. And we've found solutions for those and they will happen. So it's just given a general presentation. You raise these concerns, we've solved them and this is how it's going to work this year. And that, and that will mean.
I think that's, I think that's the key. This is what we're planning to do this year. Unless there's anything drastic, you know, can we have the thumbs up? And if you've got any observations or, or things you'd like to improve for next year, because the, the lead time for this sort of stuff takes so damn long, you know, trying to do it from August till, you know, November would be awkward.
Yeah.
I think we are just trying to sort of evolve it rather than completely change it.
Okay, and I think it's, it, my perception is it's quite solid, but in comparison to the D days, not well, which is good, but I just, I'm just.
It is in some respects. It's just the ownership of it hasn't been with us.
Yeah.
I leave for.
About that element. And to be that, is that more reassurance thing of, okay, this is what we're doing. And then if someone has, actually there is one thing we can do, which is a very simple thing. It's, it's worth noting.
Yeah.
Hmm. I was originally going to suggest sort of maybe a September time, that would be a sensible thing to have, we reviewed it, heritage events, but very.
Well, that sounds good to me. I, you know.
So first, will you come to this committee and then?
Yeah, yes.
We'll go to the, before planning, for example, September.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I don't want to sort of present it as my, it's, it's the committee's sort of thing really.
Can I, can I just ask something? Because I always find it strange that, um, as councillors, you get rowed up, you stand on the steps, the parade comes into the square and then you almost like come join it. Is there not an appetite for councillors to actually be part of the parade?
I'm not for the hardest job, but.
No, see that, see that is, that the answer in the past would have been, actually, our councillors have been quite, you know, anxious, you know what I'm saying? And they, they, they don't, they don't, they don't want to walk that far. But it just seems weird that you come out and lurk on the steps and then just move in. And you've not been part of the parade, you know, it's strange.
Whereas when we do, when we do, um, the Battle of Britain, we, um, I know it's a short distance, but we do go together over there or when we, you know, it does, it does seem a bit odd that we don't take part.
But the route that we're taking though, Mac, it's changed and it's, it's, it's a, it's more forgiving, isn't it? It's up the high street rather than up well street and, you know, it's not on the hill. It's along the, it's on Pinkhill, so it isn't.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a proper, I, I would have no objection.
But you know, it all has to go.